Okay, we're all set. March 20th, 2019, first day of spring. Called a meeting to order announcements, first day of spring. Saw a couple around them, so I'm sort of excited, but...
I cut pussy balloons.
I don't know if my colleagues have any announcements.
I don't, thank you.
Okay, is anybody here for public forum? No. We'll go to minutes, approval of minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of March 6th, 2019.
Motion made, and I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of December 19th, 2018.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Motion carries, okay.
And I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of August 15th, 2018.
I'll second that. Motion made, motion seconded. Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
So be it. Okay, posted business would be, we have a request for a one-day alcohol license application from the Northampton Chamber of Commerce. My understanding is all the paperwork is in order. It would be a function would be the Danko Modern at Danko, correct? And it's for you guys, so I don't know if you want to say anything about it, or...
It's a networking event. It happens monthly, and it's about 100 to 125 people attend each month. It's just a way for our members to get together and socialize and learn a bit about the Danko Modern business for them to share.
Very nice.
My co-hosts from...
Welcome to come.
Yes, everyone's welcome to come. My co-host Ross Grant from Danko Modern and executive director Suzanne Beckright.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the one-day alcohol license for the Northampton Chamber of Commerce. And I have a second. Any discussion?
Nope.
Motion made, motion seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so be it. Do you need to sign right now, or do we sign it afterwards? Okay, so we can do that now?
Hope it goes well for you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Should we send some tickets? Are you interested?
Sure.
Why not?
You want to...
Oh, you want us to sign it now?
Yeah, we got to sign it, and I guess they're going to take it with them.
He said she'll take care of it tomorrow.
Here, we'll take care of it tomorrow, all right. Okay, we're going to move to topic one, which is annual appointments from the town clerk. We have a listing of appointments, and we are being asked to appoint all those on the list except in yellow. So anybody in yellow on the list is excluded from that. And I don't know, my colleagues have had a chance to look at...
Yeah, I have. Just to follow up on what Ed said, I would say that the reason they're in yellow is we're waiting for committee reorganizations, or for folks don't want to be reappointed, just in case people were wondering what yellow meant. So I will make a motion that we make the annual appointments as submitted, except for those appointments to be made at a later date, which are highlighted in yellow. They're either waiting committee reorganizational meetings, or choose not to be wish... choose not wishing to be reappointed.
I'll second that. Any discussion? I just want to say thank you to the people on the list for, once again, participating for the town of Hatfield and donating your time to make Hatfield a great town to live in. Motion made, motion seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Key and Lydia, for putting that together.
350th anniversary update. Don't have them here yet, okay? So the next top will be town government. I know you guys are here, if you want to come up front. Oh, my pen went to...
Oh, did I take it here? Sorry. I thought I had next to me.
Okay, Larry, I just have, before you start on questions, I just have one question I'm a little confused on before we begin. I was looking at the charter, and the way I read this charter is, once the tasks of the committee were done, and once the written report was presented to the Board of Selectmen, then your jobs were completed. But I noticed that you posted a meeting as a town government, but I'm just confused. If your committee is no longer a committee after you give us the report, maybe you can help me out here.
Well, if you remember the December meeting that we submitted the report, we offered to be disbanded. And the selectmen elected not to do that, and thought it was be useful to keep us in formation for what everyone anticipated, a discussion at annual town meeting about the article to change to five members. So we offered to be disbanded, actually, and I think the selectmen, and we agreed. We thought that's a reasonable idea.
I'm also not sure where it says here that we are disbanded by having turned in the report.
Okay.
I don't know where it says that.
I was just reading it that way. I'm just asking for clarification.
Yeah. But that's what happened in December.
The report to be completed in December, which it was.
You actually thought it was useful.
Does that say that the group is done when we return the report?
Well, the appointment, the appointment would expire once the report is submitted.
Well, we offered that, but then we feel our appointment was extended to at least annual town meeting. At least that's what happened.
I would agree with that. We did not vote to disband, and we did have that conversation, and it was offered by the three of you, that in case other questions arose, or more information was needed, you would continue to be a committee, even though at the time there was no more action to be taken as a committee, because you turned in the report. I mean, that's my recollection of that meeting.
Yeah, that's what we offered.
That's fine. That's fine. I'm just going over the stuff, and I was just wondering about that.
I would suggest in the future, if this, something like this were to come up, that you put something that, once the report is submitted and accepted by the Board of Selectmen, that the committee would be disbanded, or that the discussion would be held to...
Or a vote taken, or something.
Or a vote taken to continue its... because I certain, I believe Marlene when she says, once we report that that's fine, I don't know, I'm not an expert in...
Well, that was the intent, I'm just saying.
But I think that that would be clearer in the future, if something like this, you were to actually put something in there that says that.
I would agree.
So that the people who are volunteering to be part of it would know that they were done or not.
All right, that's fine.
It does say July 18th through December, just so you know, but yeah, I see.
We can follow up, just to make sure everything's, everybody's happy. Okay, now, I know you wanted to come, yes, I have a question back there.
We might want to just take a formal vote to ratify what you discussed in December, to extend the period of their, the committee to whatever date you feel prudent, since I read it the same way. The period was July 18th upon completion of the report they were asked to do, so it doesn't hurt to take a vote.
Okay, is that what the committee, does the committee want that?
Well, you asked us to stay. Brian remembers this. It's the same three people, so you asked us to stay.
And plus, in addition, it seems, it appears that maybe we didn't do our job. I mean, there's been some question from not only you, you two, the members of the board, but others apparently feel that the report is not complete.
Well, actually, the tasks that were assigned, I do believe you accomplished those tasks. I believe some of the items that were brought up are, were not the tasks that you were assigned. I mean, basically, if that's the ones we have in question, I mean...
Okay, so can we do a couple things, maybe easy things first? So to the town, well, to the town clerk's comment, I'll make a motion that the Government Committee Task Force continue till June 1st, 2019.
We needed that one.
Well, town meeting's in the middle of May.
May, right. June 1st. Let's say June 1st, which will take us through town meeting.
For the purpose of, does it, do we have to have an explanation in there? For the purpose of, or anything like that, Lydia?
Nope.
Lydia, are you saying, no, I can't really see your head, I'm sorry. I know it's moving. No, you don't have to, okay.
They were tasked to do that. They did that, you're extending it, so they can still meet, they can still do other things. Thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion. You second? I'll second the motion, then we'll move it through. Motion made, motion seconded. Any discussion?
No.
Okay, so now we're all...
Those in favor? Aye.
On the same page. Okay, that's fine. Now, you...
No, let's do a vote. Got to take a vote of all three of us. That's how we do it, right? I vote aye. You need a vote, Cindy needs a vote.
Aye.
All right. Come on. Now we, we got that part. I'm not confused anymore. Thank you. All right, so you wanted...
Would you like to modify this charter in some way to, perhaps, there's been suggestion that more work might be done by this committee? I know Cindy wanted a survey.
No, 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 no.
Oh, no?
I never asked for a survey, no. No, the only questions...
Maybe I misunderstood.
No, the only questions I asked is, when you brought back everything? You said how Duxbury had done a survey and interviewed people, and I think there might have been a referendum question. So my only question was, did you do any of those things? And you said, no, I never asked her one.
The Division of Local Services did that for Duxbury. They're the ones that wrote that report.
No, when you said that was, yeah.
Independent, non-biased group that would come in and do something like that.
Yeah, I guess we're reacting to...
No, I didn't ask for any of those things. I just asked if it had been done, because you brought, and you said Duxbury did this, and Duxbury did that, and I said, oh, did you do that?
No, no. We could do it. That would have been way over our heads. We'd need a budget, something like that.
Can I make a suggestion, Mr. Chairman? Can I make a suggestion?
Can we right here?
So first off, we appreciate you being here, and it's obviously, it's in response to our last meeting.
Right.
That was televised two weeks ago, whatever it was. So maybe what makes sense, I'm asking you, maybe what makes sense is to just go over that same presentation you gave us, or add a highlight and said, here's what we did, you know, so everybody can see it again, they can hear it again, and then that'll prompt, potentially prompt questions, or more clarification from something. Does that make sense, or, I mean, I don't want you to reinvent the wheel.
We provided you with a list of people in towns in Western Mass that have three or five select board members, so that you could see whether we were similar or not. We did some research, we met with the town attorney, who put together a very formal town meeting warrant article, which is a simple article that could be put on the town meeting warrant that states that if you voted to support the article, to move the select board from three to five, this is the procedure that would happen, and it's all outlined there, that so many would be elected in this, and they would, they would be for so many years, and you can read it, it's, you've got the thing.
And that was what you guys were asked to do.
Correct.
That was the charter.
Right.
It was that simple. What does it take for the town of Hatfield to go from a three-member board to a five-member board?
We provided other stuff.
You did, a lot more.
It was just more informational, you know, to try to help...
Knowing some of the questions.
Yeah, I mean, stuff we came across when we were doing our research. The people that we met with, the things that we did, you know, stuff that was in all the minutes of our meetings, it was simply, it was simply that. I think that when we were formed, this, the intent of this was to bring this to annual town meeting. That was my 100% feeling, that this, whatever came out of this would be brought, would be put on the annual town meeting warrant, and allowed the townspeople to decide whether they want to do this.
Well, personally, I mean, that's fine.
And I'll tell you point blank, with all due respect, Mr. Jaworski, at the meeting the other day, okay, your personal feelings about whether or not this should be three or five should not be part of your decision-making as to whether or not this should be on the annual town meeting warrant.
Well, let me comment to that. It's not that I'm...
Because you don't have to like that, you don't have to support it.
No, you're wrong. You're wrong.
How am I wrong?
Okay, I'm not, I'm not against the article moving forward. What I am against is the article being, saying, submitted by the Board of Selectmen.
That's fine, but that's not what you said the other day. Your person, you started out with my personal feelings.
Well, that's fine, but I'm gonna...
Your personal feelings should not be part of this discussion.
I recognize if you say the wrong word up here, and you say the wrong thing, you sometimes get attacked, and that's fine. You have the right to feel the way you feel. So I'm just going to clarify myself to be on record. What I am against is, right now, this article going to town meeting saying, submitted by the Board of Selectmen. If you guys want to say submitted by the town government committee, I do not have a problem with that.
Are we allowed to do that?
Okay, yes. We can make a recommendation.
Well, we have to add the citizens' position.
I mean, we have, right now, we're getting ready to do the town articles, and many times, various committees submit articles to the board, and the board says, okay, we'll accept that article from the finance committee, we'll accept it from conservation committee, because right now, right now, I can't see, it's not, it's divided issue on this board, but if I have, I'm not going to block the article to town meeting, but if it says, submitted by the town government, I don't have a problem with that.
How does the Conservation Commission come forward with an article and ask you to put it on the warrant?
Well, right now, the way the process is, is usually it goes through Marlene. So Marlene asks the various committees in the board what articles they would like at town meeting.
So if we pull this piece of paper out of our report from the town attorney and submit it to Marlene, and say, we request the town government committee requests that this be placed on the annual town meeting warrant, that that's sufficient? It'll be done.
But I would like to add a couple things.
I'm just saying, I can only speak for myself on this.
You don't have to support it, you don't have to put your name on it, but that's not what you said the other day.
When we get to the articles, well, I'm sorry, I got misunderstood, but there's a lot of stuff happening, and I know that if you say the wrong thing, and people try to make it personal sometimes, and it shouldn't be personal, all right? I mean, I was...
You said you just didn't like the idea, but I want to, I guess my question is, why wouldn't the Board of Selectmen put an article on that could be voted up or down by the people? What would be the negative of that?
Well, I don't want the town to get the false impression that the board, by saying, submitted by the Board of Selectmen, that the board is totally in favor of the article, okay? All right.
In December, we discussed some objections, and it doesn't seem that that discussion had any impact, because last week, we heard things about 20-hour assistance, and the selectmen, the magical five are going to vote health benefits and retirement benefits for themselves. Where did that all come from? That's coming out of thin air.
Well, I only can speak for my comments. As far as additional support in the staff, I base it on my opinion of coming here on a daily basis, and if you have ever supervised a bunch of people, one thing you do is you try to understand what the workloads are, what the people face, if they got the right tools, if they don't have the right tools, and by coming here on a daily basis, that's what I base my opinion on. Because right now, if you have three members coming down, I know my colleagues are in contact with the town hall on a regular basis, so if you, if you have three people coming down here, going to different departments, asking questions, now you got five people coming down here asking so. I truly believe, what I've seen over the last couple of years, that if we add more chefs to make the soup, we're going to need a little bit more support, because right now, there's another picture that I don't think people see. I have to look at the whole picture, and right now, Bay State is sort of saying, we need a little bit more support in the collector's office, and we get more bang for the buck. So if I'm going to have the town spend another $5,000 or $6,000 at this time, at this time, it makes more sense to use that money that you would spend for selectmen into that office. But, but I believe, I believe, Larry, that if you add a couple more chefs to make the soup, then yes, you're going to have to spend some more money, and that money is better spent for the best bang. That's how I arrived at it.
Okay, and let me just say something about that.
That's my opinion.
It's an outrageous claim. For one thing, if you had five, first of all, the outrageous claim is that the selectmen go and bother Marlene for hours every day. Right now, the estimated time that you said last week, say it's a, and I'll be on the conservative side, say it's a half hour for each of you, that's 20% of Marlene's time is being taken up by individual selectmen. God only knows what they're doing with Marlene, but she must have a lot of work to do, and this I don't understand. There's never been selectmen doing this in the history of Hatfield.
Well, maybe, maybe we do things differently on this board. If you've noticed, I'm pretty proud of this board. We've gotten a lot of accomplishments done. We got the front steps done. We got the finances changed, we got a lot of stuff, we're moving ahead with the hall.
But you have professionals doing it.
So maybe by coming here every day and keeping in touch, it's a little bit better. Yes, Cindy, go right ahead.
I just, I don't have any opinions on this, but I just want to clarify a couple things, okay? If I could, I'd like to be Switzerland, but I don't think it was, you know, I'd like to keep it as calm as we can, but when this started, my understanding was nobody was going to give an opinion, okay? I popped in one of the meetings, you know, the openings that you had for a while, and somebody goes, oh, it's getting a little heated in there. I didn't think it was really heated. People, you know, have their opinions, but the audience, you had an audience member that was going back and forth with you that said, you're not supposed to be giving your opinions, and he kept saying that's what he... So I think it started getting a little heated there, and I don't want it to get heated here, but I just, in all fairness, and I know everybody had, you know, was trying to do it for what they think are the right reasons. We all think it's the right reasons, but, you know, to attack him and say he gave his opinion, that very first day that you brought things back, Mr. Jaworski didn't give an opinion, I didn't give an opinion, and Brian, I think you remember, you said you were going to give your, because you said, I think you said, I don't want anybody to say that Brian more already, and you gave your opinion, but, so if he's not supposed to give an opinion, maybe nobody should have, or should? Do you know what I'm saying?
His opinion shouldn't cloud whether this becomes an annual town meeting warrant article.
I see what you mean.
He can have his own opinion about the, about whether or not he should go to three to five. I'm saying is, a personal opinion of any one of you...
Yes.
...should not be the factor that decides whether this goes on the annual town meeting warrant. That's my point.
Right. Pro or con?
Pro or con.
Okay.
Right.
But I'd like that to be a practical...
Many of us know Brian's in favor of this. But we should, Brian should not be doing it, or stating that, oh, I'm in favor of this, so I want it to go forward. He should be deciding, because maybe, because maybe the unanimous vote at last year's town meeting to put, about this article is the town saying, let's listen about what this is all about. That's, and you should be listening to your constituents, not necessarily to...
But I, I just, I can't express my opinion, how I feel, I don't feel at this time. The report and what I've seen means that we should have five members on this board. I'm sorry.
That's what I'm saying.
And that's why I'm saying, if you want this article to go to town meeting, I'm not going to block it, as long as you want to put your name on it, that's fine. I can't, at this time, I can't support it.
I'd just like to add to the objection that, say you each, if there were five, you can meet with Marlene in groups of two, which you're not allowed to do right now. So there'd be three meetings. It would be absolutely the exact same amount of tying up Marlene. If you three, you went in groups of two, that would only still be three slots. So that, there's, this story about the additional, this 20-hour assistant evaporates. And the second thing that Cindy brought up was the health and insurance benefits, and there are no elected officials in town for the last 20 years, I think it's been. There was, it went away. We don't offer benefits to elected officials.
As far as that one, I'll let Cindy respond to that one.
Two things. First, that, the first day we had it, you had a simple charter, and that's where I got that idea from, because it, however that, you know, for this, it was like a one-page thing that first day, and it had something in there that made me feel there was benefits, the way it was worded.
Oh, I know what you're referring to, the original charter, the draft that I had.
Yes, she brought in a draft, and that was there, okay?
I'm sorry, can you be more specific, Marlene?
When the Board of Selectmen were discussing, this is before the committee was even appointed, and what the committee would be charged to be doing.
So that one, that, yeah, it was brought up last week, and so, can we all agree it's not, it's not true, it's fake news?
Yeah, it's like, it's like putting it out there and saying, well, if you're more select board members, now we're going to have $100,000 here in insurance benefits.
No, he wanted to know where I got that from, and I think, was there also a raise proposed, or no?
That's, that's like throwing meat on the fire to the, to the townspeople, after he was here, oh, now they're going to vote themselves benefits, why would we do this?
Well, that was in the charter. That's where it came from. No, but the one I thought, you asked why I said that, because that's what was placed in front of me, I read it, and that's what it said, okay? Maybe you can get a copy.
What document is that?
It really is, it's just not relative to this.
Right, but it's out there that people think that this is, this could happen.
The only, the only money, direct money that the selectmen receive is an annual or a stipend, quarterly, that's it.
Thank you. So I'm trying to figure out...
There was a time, there was a time that elected officials, if they wished to receive health and insurance.
Over 20 years.
I don't think it was that, it wasn't that long ago. It wasn't that long ago, because I was here. I was here, but anyway.
No, I was talking, it was at, it was at a recorded, it was at a board meeting, it was presented, that's what it said, that's where that idea came from. And the only other, the only other thing that kind of worried me, okay, was when we started this, because I'd like it to be fair, I'd like the town to decide, okay? I've done that way on everything so far, for almost two years, all right? However, you know, we want to be fair and everything, but a lot, you know, I listen to people every day, and I kind of agree if this is the case, that if the three people that were appointed to this independent committee to find out if it was a good idea or a bad idea, and research it, if they all went in with the same idea that this is what they wanted, was five, is that a fair committee? Do you know what I mean? Is that a predetermined outcome? If the three people that are appointed, do you know?
It was no secret that I was in favor of five 10 years ago. I put an article on the warrant.
Right, I think it's been up twice, hasn't it?
And you know, I second that your appointments, maybe all your other appointments, we could review as bias, or, but nonetheless, there was independent research, there were consequences or questioning, and results derived. So people could have objections, but that's why we put the questions and answers. Hopefully, that would be the kind of questions that people at town meeting would have. What is, why are we doing five? I mean, we're not doing it for us to be selectmen, I pledge right now, I'll never be a selectman.
And that's out there, that people think that the people on this committee are saying that we want to go to five, so that we could get on the, on the select board.
You got to filter all that, you know what I mean? But you have to, but you have to ask the questions, too. But you have to ask the questions.
Why not look at the more important things of governance? Ed talked about the great, how much workload. I think you would all appreciate to have two more colleagues and have subcommittees.
Well, I think, I just want to point out one thing. We have something that other five-member boards do not have. We have a town administrator that does the daily business of the town, so, and as far as subcommittees, I'm still confused at what you want for subcommittees, because I just want to say, I've been on the board for two years, there's been two committees. It was the 350th anniversary, and now a committee to have five more people to have subcommittee. So I mean, I just, if we need information, we call the finance committee forward, we work with them. We need information on that. I mean, we can, we can dispute this, argue this, whatever. I mean, we'll have time at town floor to discuss it.
Willie, the moderator sat with you last week, it seems like he has a predetermined feeling about this.
No, wait a minute. I introduced the person as a moderator, that was probably my mistake, because when I think of Joe LaValle, I think moderator, so out of top of my head, I said Joe LaValle, town moderator, but, and that was my mistake, because, and Joe politely corrected me that he wasn't there at the meeting as a moderator. And in your email, you were sort of, it was sort of upsetting in a way, you were sort of saying, well, he was sitting up front, was it set up or something? Was it set up or something? Come on, there's no conspiracies here.
Well, I was saying, isn't on the agenda for the, to discuss five member. Mike Cahill was here to discuss it, and he sat in the audience.
That was his choice. He sits wherever he wants to. I mean, you just came in here. Where did you sit? You picked whatever chair you wanted, right?
Couldn't we sit up with you next meeting?
Well, if you want to sit up here, sit up here. Put the camera on you, that's fine.
That's not a normal thing, that an audience member sits with the selectmen?
This is, that's what I mean. I just hope we don't get into national politics when people disagree with somebody. They want to come up with stuff and attack them, you know? Let's keep this sensible, let's keep it logical. Let's not come up with conspiracy theories and all this other, this garbage. Because I didn't like those emails that you guys sent with your reference in that thing. But that's, that's another story, okay?
We didn't like being, thinking of talking about 20-hour administrators, insurance benefits, and all those other stuff.
Well, that's my, I can make my opinion based on what I see and what I feel, right? You can dispute it, that's okay. I have my, I have my feeling, you have yours.
Let the town people decide it then.
Whatever. I mean, and I know when you brought it up 10 years ago, I still remember. There was a lot of opposition, and there's still a lot of opposition, because I've been out in this community, and there's a lot of people that don't feel, which is fine.
But you know what the bottom line is? That's up to the people to vote at the annual town meeting.
Which is fine.
That's, that's what this question, that's what tonight is all about. And I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Regardless of my opinion of, saying regardless of Ed's. And I'm sure if it votes up, we're going to do what town meeting wants. But I would agree that the reason it was on last year's town article, town meeting, was to get the information and then bring the information back. So let's, let's, I don't care who puts the article on, but that's only fair. Why would the town say, find out the information, but don't ever tell us what it was? I mean, come on.
And why would people volunteer to be on a committee to put a report together that where, you know, the results of which would just be passed along and not, and not brought forward to annual town meeting? Why would we choose to volunteer to be on a committee ever again if that wasn't going to be the case?
And I agree, and I, you know, I think that, Ed, I think Ed, in our December meeting that we just voted the minutes on tonight, December 18th, that Selectman Jaworski said the increase of the Board of Selectmen isn't something he would do at a special town meeting, but rather an annual town meeting.
And we were 100% with that. Why not? It's the most number of people that are there, and that would be the best, the best way to go.
I agree as well.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I, I said at this point, after I reviewed everything, my point is, just a minute, let be, please recognize.
Fran.
Who appointed this committee?
The Board of Select.
Board of Select, so they answer to you, is that correct?
Well, yes.
They gave you the report. So the three of you sit down and review the report, all right? And then what do you do with it then? What does the Board of Selectmen have to do with that committee?
Well, I don't want to speak for my colleagues. My, my take on it is the board was, the committee was formed by this board
Right.
to do the study, which they did. Bring back the information and present it to us. We have that, we digested that.
That's right.
But ultimately, we don't do anything with it. It's the town of Hatfield, annual town meeting.
Who authorizes it to go to the town meeting?
Well, that's what the conversation is.
That's what we're talking about right now.
Why should it be a conversation? Who's in charge? You're in charge.
What I...
Do you, it's not that. What is the law? You appointed this committee, is that correct?
No.
They gave her, did they, did you or not? You didn't appoint them?
An article on town meeting goes three ways.
I'm asking you a question. Did you appoint these three men to do this study for you?
We all did.
Okay, you did. Did they give you the report?
Yes, they did.
Okay, what are you supposed to do with it from there?
That's what we're discussing right now.
Why do you discuss it?
Review and decide what to do with it.
It doesn't, it doesn't say in the charter what we do with it. It says we receive it.
That's why you need five.
Receives it, and whatever.
These men were out and working hard for you, did a good job with that, that's a good report. And now you're fighting with the three guys. No wonder people don't want to go with the town.
I am not trying to fight with anybody. I'm trying to point that I am not against the article going to town meeting. I just don't want the Board of Selectmen is not board. I mean, I have my opinion, you have yours. I mean, that's fine.
My opinion is what you're supposed to do with the, you asked for it.
Now, now, wait a minute. Now, let me back up. At the very beginning, back a year ago, let me, Fran, let me explain, okay? A year ago, my colleague asked to have this put on town meeting. Out of courtesy to my colleague, I agreed to it.
Okay, then what should be it?
All right.
Then you both do.
And they gave me the report, and as far as I'm concerned, it doesn't convince me that we need five members. But they feel strongly that we should have five members, then they can just say, okay, let's put their name on it.
We feel strongly that it should be on the annual town meeting warrant, that's all. And actually, we, we supposedly don't exist after December, so we couldn't put it on the warrant. If we didn't exist in December, you have to put it on. But we've been reappointed, so we can, we can put it forward.
All right.
So that's what we're going to do.
If I might just say this one thing.
All right.
As a board of selectmen, you control the town warrant. You can yea or nay it.
Exactly.
Want up and down.
Exactly.
If you put this article on, it does not mean you support it or you reject it. You can put it on totally objective, and if you don't feel that it is warranted or that it should be supported, you may step off the deesis, along with the rest of the townspeople, and speak your minds. You do not have, you just have to read the motion and second it. Nothing more.
Chris, I understand that.
That's all.
But in my full conscience, I can't say, I'm going to send this to town meeting and ask them to vote for it when I am against it.
You aren't.
And I don't want to, and I say, if you want to put your name onto it, fine. We will send the art, I will be in blessing to the article. Because I, I believe what you're saying, it will give a false impression to the people that the board submits it.
Well, I think maybe without your putting it on, it may give the impression you're against it, the board.
Well, I'm not convinced by everything I've seen that, I will say, I am, I am not for this, yes. I will go on record as saying that.
But has the board voted that? I mean, is there a vote of not put it on?
It hasn't been brought up to a vote yet. We just discussed it, and at the last meeting, we couldn't. We had a meeting with the finance committee, so we moved to that. So tonight, tonight, hopefully, we can get to those articles. And what I just told you, if it says submitted by the town government committee, fine. I don't have a problem with that. That's, that's how I will...
Before we do that, shouldn't the selectmen vote that they will not support it? And they won't put it on? So then we could have other plans?
Well, do you feel that, because you did a report that the selectmen, and you, do you feel that you did a report and you have your findings that the select board should support that? I'm not sure what you want me to support.
We're not using the word support. We're asking you to put it on the warrant.
That's it.
That's all. What's the deadline for warrants if, for...
24th.
So...
Well, we tried to get it a week.
24th of this month.
Yeah, so that's what, Sunday?
It's not April. The selectmen are signing it no later than April 24th.
So this is March. So we're a long ways, a couple of weeks away from the deadline?
No, as soon as you can get it in, as soon as possible.
Right, so even though there's discussion of town meeting warrants on today's thing, there still will be more discussion about town meeting warrants down the road.
Whatever day I sent, I put in the email, town council has to review all the articles.
So we have plenty of time to submit something, have it come to the Board of Selectmen for consideration to be on the annual town meeting warrant?
Well, if you want it on the town at meeting warrant, and you want us to vote, I'm willing to vote. If it says submitted by the town government, I am willing to vote right now.
That's what we'll do. We'll submit something from the town government committee.
I think we're passing the buck, quite frankly.
Which is fine, just so that we're, I'll, I think the three of us only care that it's on the, that's on the warrant. We can speak to the other stuff at town meeting, so...
Let them show up, they can be an objective leaders. And do, do the thing that was asked for us to do. We submitted a report, we didn't say yea or nay, one way or another. We showed pros and cons, but that's it. Committee never voted one way or another to support or not to support. How about you guys showing, showing that you can do the same thing? Put it on because last annual meeting, unanimous support, that we, we present this question once we knew what the procedure was. And the procedure is, is very clear on page four, on how to do it. Do your job, please. Do your job. Vote objectively, and if you don't like it, Ed and Cindy or Brian, get off the deesis. Come down and speak.
Well, here we go. Here we go, because I don't agree with you, you're going to attack the board, and that's, that's wrong. Here we go again.
I'm asking you to do your job.
You don't agree with me, so I want to attack the board and get off the board. Come on, please, Chris, stop doing that kind of stuff.
He didn't say get off the board, he said you got to come to town meeting and talk. He didn't say get off the board.
No, 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 just speak.
We're not, we're not going to get any farther than that.
Basically, all you're saying, you want this article on town meeting, so we'll get it on town meeting.
We'll submit it as a town government committee, and hopefully, it'll end up on annual town meeting warrant.
That's too bad.
Can I ask one more thing?
Go ahead.
I went, I read through everything, you know, again today. And I just wanted to, was there someplace, or did I misunderstand? Was there someplace that it said in there that we did not have a charter already for the select board?
We don't have a charter, and we don't have any other, we operate by bylaw.
We don't have a town charter, right? Correct.
You mean a town charter or a select board charter?
I don't know about select board charter. There's no such thing as a select board charter, but we operate under bylaw.
Right. Is that bylaw?
No, this is, it says Hatfield Board of Selectmen Charter adopted June 9th, 2014. That's why I asked.
You guys, then you did that, but it's not town bylaw.
Because I dug this out.
It's not town bylaw, voted up and down.
I was in here 2014, but I was using this, I was using this for an emergency management thing to look for where the, you know, the, like the chain of command thing was. And I knew I'd seen it someplace, so I found it in my notes today. No, I just found it today, because it clicked with me. Do you know, and I had it in my emergency manager folder? Yeah. So, and I thought, I read, you said there wasn't a charter, but I did find this one that...
That's not a town charter.
Excuse me, select board charter, that's what I said, right?
What's that?
Hatfield Board of Selectmen Charter, it says.
Board of Selectmen Charter, I don't know what that is. That's just your operating procedures, maybe.
Right, but that's what, that's what I asked, you just say there wasn't one. Right, I know what it is, but is that what you were saying?
No, the bylaw does lay out, there was a Board of Selectmen, and that's about all it says.
Well, actually, our town bylaw doesn't even say that.
Yeah, it doesn't establish that.
You guys operate under MGL 41, section one, which says, the town can have three or more selectmen. That's it.
Since we don't have a charter and our bylaw is rather vague, it defaults to mass general law.
Whatever.
Which is also part of the report that we, that we put in.
Okay, my last question, do you understand where I got that thought that I talked about earlier, about why I felt there was benefits because of, that I read? And I can try to find that too.
None of us saw, knew that document. That was a kind of a former board...
So we still haven't decided anything, right?
Well, is there anything else that you need to discuss with us?
Well, I mean, I guess, we could submit this under the town government, since we exist till June, we could submit this article. But before we do it, it would be nice to know that the selectmen won't do it.
Well, I'm, I'm, I still am not convinced by the reports that we make.
Just townspeople can do that too.
Why wouldn't you take a vote?
Don't you need like 50 townspeople or something on it?
Or you have questions. You said, you said that, you know, no matter what we say, you're not going to change your mind, so it...
Right, because it doesn't even have to be the board, like just signatures from townspeople can do it too.
Well, we have a board now. We could submit it as a board.
Right. Yeah.
Honestly though, and you know this from town meeting, it doesn't have the weight. An article that's submitted by citizens or some boards does not, do not have the weight of a selectman's article, and often, if there are money involved, it's supported by the finance committee. So it does make a difference of that little line beneath, beneath the article.
But aren't you implying that when the board submits an article, then they're sort of saying to the town that they're in favor of it?
No, I think it just, the seriousness of it, this is a, this would be a major change. That's why we talked about putting it on town meeting rather than special. Although we also told you that Hadley did this at a special town meeting. They didn't wait for an annual. I think more, it's saying it's an important discussion for the town to have. It's not necessarily that you support it. It doesn't say supported by the Board of Selectmen, although it does oftentimes...
But you're saying it carries more weight though, so kind of contradictory.
Oftentimes does do that with the finance committee. Finance committee says supported by the finance committee.
If there's money involved.
Right, but all it needs to say is brought forth by the select board, or I don't know how to, what the...
I don't know if it says anything under those articles.
Doesn't have to say supported or that you are in favor of it, it just...
That's submitted by.
Submitted by.
Doesn't mean you support it, it means you submitted.
Submitted by.
Either way. Yeah.
Yeah, well, okay. But I guess, so we're not going to get a vote of, the selectmen are not going to go on record of how they feel about this. Tonight.
Well, tonight, we have to go through the articles. So I said right now, I said tonight that if this article goes with...
Is this on the list?
Submitted by the town government committee.
Let's wait for them to see how they go.
I'd be happy to go.
Okay, fair enough.
Excuse me, I, I don't think, I think I was talking, I don't, I didn't get interrupted. What I said was, what I said. I said, right now, I would, I'd be in agreement to this article going forward to town meeting if it says submitted by the town government committee. That's all I'm saying. If that's what you wanted at town, then you can make the argument at town meeting. Because right now, I'm, I'd probably go as a private citizen on town meeting and, and express myself.
That's one of it, but you're not saying how the board would vote.
I think in fairness to this committee that did the work, I think in fairness to the townspeople, and quite frankly, I think in fairness to the three of us as Board of Selectmen, that I'm going to make a motion to submit an article to see if the town will vote to increase the Board of Selectmen from three to five members and take any act, or take any other action relative there too. That's an article that we're going to be reviewing later. I'm making the motion now to see if there's support for it. Regardless of how anybody feels about this, and I said it last week, and I'll say it again tonight. For me, regardless of how I hope this moves forward, it's about letting the townspeople have their say after last year's town meeting when we asked them if we could do this. And there wasn't a single person at town meeting last year that said no as far as putting a committee together to find out what you do. So I'm making that motion to put it as an article. I don't believe that it says submitted by the Board of Selectmen. We do that all the time with articles that we've got nothing to do with per se, and this is important. I agree, that this changes things in this town. But the town people should yea or nay, and we should be the ones to bring it forward, because we're the ones that brought it forward last year. I think we're passing the buck. If we say, we're not putting it on town meeting, we're going to give it to the government committee to do it. Brian's opinion, that's all. So I've made a motion.
I feel we, we do, we are elected to do what we feel is in the best interest of the town of Hatfield. I don't feel this is in the best interest of the town of Hatfield, so, and good conscience, I can't say submitted by the Board of Selectmen.
But you did think it, Ed, in December 18th, when you said this should be discussed at an annual town meeting. It's in the minutes, we just voted on them an hour ago.
It can be discussed at town meeting, I just don't want to put the board's stamp on it, that's all.
Well, again, I disagree that we're putting our stamp on it, but anyways.
Shouldn't there be a second before we have a discussion about it?
Yeah, there should be a second.
But if there's no second, then we don't have discussion about it.
If Cindy goes for it, then it goes forth as that way.
Do you know, do you, Article 1 doesn't have your name on it.
Okay, Brian made a motion.
Well, it should, so it should be seconded for at least discussion purposes.
We've already said, it's already been, nobody did the second before discussion.
But if it's going to continue, we should have the second, and then whatever. So now we can have a discussion, because Cindy seconded it.
Oh, okay.
No, she didn't.
Oh, I thought you just said you seconded it.
I said, no, nobody seconded it, you already had the discussion.
Okay, so, fine, the select board just went on record, there's no second, you've killed the motion.
No, we didn't go on record.
No, you did, you did, we're done.
He said she seconded it, and I said, no, I didn't.
No, 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 that you're not going to support Brian's motion is what you're going on record.
Motion fails.
No, I didn't, he said she just seconded it, I said, no, I didn't, I'm still thinking.
We're back to my...
Yes or no, seconded.
We're saying the same thing.
For discussion.
There's a motion.
No, we're not saying the same thing, there's a motion, give me some, you know...
If nobody seconds it, the conversation's over. Ed, are you going to second it?
I don't know.
Cindy going to second it? If not, then the conversation's over, then let's move on to the next thing on our agenda.
Seconding it doesn't mean you support it.
That's right.
I seconded.
Okay, she has seconded, now you have a discussion.
So, I just want to make that clear, when you said Cindy seconded she hadn't, I was trying to think about it, and you said, yes, you did, yes, you didn't, no, you didn't, you know, the discussion shouldn't...
I heard the word second, Cindy, I wasn't trying to put it on you.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me.
No, excuse me.
The discussion shouldn't happen before that, all right? My thought, while I was sitting here, my thought is, it's getting a little bit, maybe it should be put off a week, you know what I mean, just come back and do it, that's why I didn't second it, and that's what I'm saying now, I don't know if we should continue it now or continue it next week. You know, and this is, and last time it was brought up, I was in the same position, I thought I knew exactly what, but there's good arguments on both sides of it, I feel, and that's why, so if we can have a little bit more discussion, I'm fine with that, and then...
You could, you could, you could, somebody could, now that there's a motion on, someone could vote, could have put a motion out to table it for a week as well.
Well, that's what I'm...
Okay, so, if you don't want to have this, continue this discussion, then somebody make a motion to table it for a week or two, or whatever, till the next meeting, to give people a chance to think about it some more, that's fine, or you can just say yes or no, and it could even, there could even be another motion at the next meeting to do the same thing.
I realize all that, and it's like, I hate to take this much time, and then put it on, you know, and take this much time again, or whatever, but I'm having a difficult time.
I again will say, I have no problem with it if it says submitted by the government committee.
Well, that isn't the question, though, it's been brought up, now the motion is to put it on as a selectman article, just like the other 20 you're going to put on.
Right, I guess, my question is, why is there even this, as long as it gets on there? Is it really, because you said it really doesn't make any difference, and then you said it carries more weight, and, you know, would it make everybody happy if you got a petition of citizens to do it?
We're talking about semantics, Cindy.
Exactly, and this is what's taken up like almost an hour. No, I'm not, no, I'm not blaming you for that, it's both sides, it's here, it's down there, it's here.
More weight, it's by weight of importance, you know, I think that it isn't pros or cons, and that's what I've been trying to say, even if the selectmen put it on, and I don't mean get off the board, Ed, I'm talking about you come down and speak as a citizen to it, and your argument is valid to you, and you'll strengthen it, I hope.
And you could vote against it.
And vote against it, sure, but it just brings it on the level playing field, and says, everybody's belief in it, whether they're for it or against it, is valid, you know, that's simple, that's all we're asking, okay?
Yeah, it almost doesn't deserve this much discussion.
I'm sorry.
Well, I don't understand, I don't understand why you just say, okay, and just do it on your own. Because if you get, how many people does it take, citizens to do a petition like that? 50?
For the annual, 10 signatures.
10? Yeah, I guess that wouldn't support, show whether the town supports it or not, it'd still be, you know, whatever turns out, you know, if it was a lot of signatures, I figured, oh, well, that kind of gives you an idea, people are for it, whatever.
Yeah, I think we were told it's only 10 signatures there.
For the annual.
But we don't need any signatures, we need a vote, two of us could vote to put it on, so.
Well, there was a motion made, there was a second.
Great.
We had discussion. I'm going to say all in favor.
Aye.
So, there's no more discussion, okay.
Do you want more discussion?
I don't know, I don't know if I have any more questions, really, I just don't know, you know, I want the right decision here, I really do, and we came to this point last time, and I said I wasn't sure then either. Because I see both sides exactly right, you know, I'm not putting my stamp on it, but I feel that the citizens should decide, obviously.
Thank you, citizens should decide.
No, 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 nobody's going to convince me at this point, I'm going to, you know, I'm going to decide on my own, so. I'm going to have to go with the town decides, okay?
Thank you.
Not for any reason, I, I'm just going to have to, it's just here, okay?
Okay, motion made, motion seconded, and you have two in favor, so, two in favor, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right.
Marlene has the language.
Okay.
Thank you for your time, again.
See, the 350th aren't here yet, right, so...
Guessing they're not coming.
What happened to them, yeah?
I mean, they were second on the list, I would have thought they'd be here early, so maybe they're not coming at all, I don't know. Well, if they show up, we can...
Now, just wait, we'll do them when they come. Topic four is the Mass DOT marker restoration project, and that's under the Town Administrator Report.
Yes, so you have in your packet notification from Mass DOT, they've been working with Epsilon Associates, and they are going to contract services with Dataless, Dataless Inc. of Watertown to restore two markers, one on, currently on Elm Street, and that will be relocated to the intersection Elm Street and Elm Court, so they're going to take these markers, and there's also the other marker on Route 5, these are historical markers, and they will restore them and, and return them to the locations, the marker, I didn't realize that the marker on Route 5, portion of that was damaged, so they're going to replace, try to replace that, and you also have, you know, pictures in your packet of those locations.
I don't know, if they got a picture on TV, it's, I can see that, what sort of the markers we're referring to.
Yeah, they're referred to as Massachusetts Bay Colony Tarcentary Markers.
Okay.
Tarcentary Markers.
Okay, we can...
Do you need a vote or something on that, Marlene?
I don't, I just thought it was worth mentioning, and, and, you know, the public is interested in knowing that, they've been in communication with the Historical Commission, so if anybody has any questions about that.
Thank you.
All right, move to topic five, Cindy wanted to make a comment, topic five, right?
Yeah, actually, a couple of them. I wanted to first talk about, and I'm not going to tear up any papers, sorry, I'm trying to make it light, I'm trying to make it light, people, okay?
Taped mine back together.
There was, you know, last week on March 6th, I believe it was, okay, there was alleged that there was an open meeting violation by the chair and myself, and I felt that it was very unfair that it was alleged out there, but, oh, I'm not going to file a complaint because if you kind of lob those grenades, and then there's no one to investigate it, you're never exonerated, okay? So, I reported us to the AG's office myself, okay, and they found that quite amusing, I should say, but I did, and they were the ones that suggested that I speak today, and I asked if I could use the attorney's name that I spoke with, and what she said to me, and they assured me that was fine, okay? So, I just want to explain, it got a little heated, and the chair, I was really disappointed I didn't get to voice my opinion, the chair ended it, and I understand it was the right move, I completely understand why you did it, it was a little frustrating for me that I didn't get to speak, but right move, I felt at the time, okay, by you, and I thank you, but on the Board of Selectmen, being a board of three, okay, two is a quorum, we are allowed, and I double-checked this with the AG's office, we are allowed to ask a question and answer it, I try to avoid even doing that, if somebody asks a question, I don't do it, I try to go through the Town Administrator, there was a comic question in passing that I wasn't even sure was directed me first, and then as I thought about it, I said it had to be to me, or whatever, but in any case, I don't want to get into too many details, but, because we've already been here an hour, but in order to be an open meeting violation, there has to be deliberation, and deliberation is worded as, okay, communications among members of the public body, it applies when the public body communicates in a serial, it uses the word serial communications, meaning more than one backing and forth to deliberate, not a question that goes unanswered in that respect, okay? It said, let's see, and it also, public body expresses an opinion on matters, there was no opinion expressed, there was a question, which I could have answered, and we didn't, okay? Second, to be considered deliberation, that part's exempt unless there's communication among them constitutes that, and the public body to communicate in a serial manner in order to evade application of the law, so it was nowhere near that, their suggestion was perhaps if, when I thought that was a question that I chose not to answer, that I should have maybe tell the Town Administrator, and she can announce it or something like that at a meeting, because when Mr. Moriarty saw the letter, he felt that, oh, they're, this, I'm just guessing this, I can't speak for you, but this was what they had said to me, oh, when he read this, he thought maybe, oh, you had an illegal meeting, which we did not, which could have been solved if you asked the Town Administrator, or if you had ever asked us, but it just happened to occur that the Town Administrator was present at the time, so this is not just my word, or Mr. Jaworski's word, or your word, she was present when we passed, so I just wanted to explain that side of it, okay, that it falls all within the law, that that's how it is, it was Attorney Kilcoin, if anybody wants to follow up with that at the AG's office, that's who was in on that day, and I don't think I have any other notes I wanted to go over right now, because I could talk forever, you know that? But, you know, and they gave just other things, like if you, and I'll just give you one, remember what would be a violation, is if a member sends an email to both the other two, the quorum, expressing an opinion, but it has to be an opinion, and it has to be in order to, you know, in an effort to evade the law, and it also says it's serial communication, so I just wanted to make that clear, and anyone's welcome to ask me about it, and I don't want to say anybody's only to ask, they can ask you to, I hope, I don't know, you'd have to say that, but, anyway, so that's what I wanted to say, and it came up exactly when the ambulance talk, that's why it's a slash here, was going to be brought up, and what we, what we had discussed, and I had talked about, and actually, I called you before that and said, oh, it didn't say on the agenda specifically that we were going to look, because I wanted to, what you just saw, you saw a committee that was formed to discuss an issue, and that's what we had talked about, and I said you had ambulance on there, didn't say that, that specifically about asking about a committee to be formed, because again, I thought it should go to the townspeople, because when I get enough complaints about one thing or another, that's what I feel it should do, is be up to the townspeople, not me, so I'd asked, and when we talked about it, we said, oh, yeah, okay, it says ambulance, that would be enough, so it wasn't, didn't go into a whole lot of detail, oh, it was to, you know, talk about that as far as capital planning, and just see if, you know, maybe we should have a committee, so that never got out there, so that's why it's on here tonight with that, because all of this happened at once. I better stop talking now, okay?
Okay. Yes.
So, I would like to respond to my colleague's comments, I have in front of me the open meeting law, Chapter 30A, of exactly what deliberation is, in oral or written communication through any medium, including electronic email between or among a quorum of the public body, so, I don't know how the question and answers went with the Attorney General, but I can tell you that I'm looking at the letter that was sent on January 5th, once again, I taped it back together, I have been tasked by Chairman of the Board of Selectmen at Jaworski to begin a feasibility study of the services in Hatfield, signed by Cindy Doty, that is a quorum of the Board of Selectmen, and by the way, I did my homework, these questions I ran by our town attorney prior to bringing this up, and you want to know why I didn't file a complaint, Cindy? It's because I work with you guys, and all I wanted to do was get a point across of how you are supposed to handle yourselves when you're passing each other in a hall at town hall every day. The town clerk agrees with me, the town attorney agrees with me, but my book's bigger than your pad, I got the whole thing for the Mass General Law is right here, so you can interpret yours, I'll interpret mine, as far as I'm concerned, it's over, it shouldn't have been done that way, I wish the meeting kept going, because I don't know how a feasibility study can be done without asking the chief of the particular department that's involved, without asking any of the departments what's going on, no EMS people, no chief, a one-person feasibility study, I never heard of such a thing. I mean, those were all the questions I was going to ask, but since we didn't have it at a meeting, a posted meeting, we couldn't do it, so.
Okay, I will, I will answer to that, the chief hasn't answered my emails in about a year, I've gone to the point where I asked...
Right there.
I've asked the Town Administrator to send him emails, and he still doesn't answer them, even if she sends them for me, so that is why that, and I thought it should go to a committee, it's not up to me.
And I don't disagree, a feasibility committee.
Yes.
But that's not what this says, you, it says I've been asked to do a feasibility study, not I've been asked to spearhead a committee that's been formed by the Board of Selectmen, which by the way, we never had a meeting on.
I wouldn't be on the committee, I wouldn't be spearheading a committee, and it's very, and it's very clear what I read, so...
Keeps spinning it the way you want, it was a violation.
Well, no, you took this, you took one sentence out of it, and I read you the whole paragraph, you can't take one sentence and say that's how it is.
Is it okay to move on now?
It's okay, move on.
Okay.
It's not one sentence, it's a paragraph, right here.
I've got...
Read it.
Well, let me read this to you also.
I don't...
What's your date?
Let's move on. Topic six, annual town meeting, town warrants, so any of my colleagues feel that we should go through each one, or how do you want to go about this?
I mean, I read through them, I don't know what...
Yeah, we usually go through each one.
I know some of the funding sources are up in the air, because we don't know what, you know, what our funding sources are yet, so.
Since the copy that you have in your packet, I have added two additional articles, one will cover a prior year expense, an additional prior year expense, because there's already an article for another department, prior year expense, and anticipating that there are, there'll be a shortfall in the water and sewers fiscal year 19 operating budget, so I've added that article as well, so you need, I will provide you with an updated copy.
All right, so, excuse me, so when, well, you're trying to get us to move forward on the articles, though, because you've got to get them to the Town Attorney.
Right, so, the board hasn't...
What do you want us to do?
Well, I'd be glad to go through each one, typically, the board does that, to just, you know, educate the community...
Yeah, there's not too much.
On the articles that will be coming before, before them, there's approximately 26 articles at this point, and I am anticipating, well, I've had a discussion with the Town Accountant, and there could be potential fiscal year 18 deficits that we would have to address, I have a placeholder in the warrant for that.
Great, all right, so, I don't, I don't know what my colleagues want to do, I mean, some of these are just the normal...
They're the standard...
Things, I mean, do you want to try to zip through some of these, Mr. Chairman, and, like, without reading the article, if you want, we, or I, or all of us can take turns, just say, for example, this one, we're going to say, okay, there's going to be an article, we need $153 for infrastructure, you know, do it, something like that, or do you want to read the whole article, or what?
Especially we get it done, you know, even if it's not the whole thing.
Yeah.
Otherwise, this will be hanging over next time, too.
Well, we can start page two, right? I mean, the first two articles on page two are standard articles, the first one sort of says, can we appropriate stuff, and the second article allows the treasurer to agree to compensating a balance agreement.
Yeah.
The third one is, Chapter 90, money, so that's this year, $242,801, so, the next article would be the sum of $153, and I'm not sure exactly what that's for.
This is a, this was created in 2018, it's a Transportation Infrastructure Enhancement Trust Fund, and it's a surcharge that the Commonwealth...
And we owe it $153.50.
We don't owe, we, we've received that, so there's a set, all communities, I mean, not communities, there is a assessment, a transportation...
Right.
Assessment, transportation, the Department of Public Utilities collects assessments from all transportation network companies, and then it's distributed, monies from this trust fund are distributed to the communities, our share is $153.
So, we're accepting that.
Right, and you can, so we're accepting it, we have to appropriate the money in order for the town to use that, and it, and in the last, or second to the last sentence, it can be used for municipal roads, bridges, or other transportation infrastructure, so the high...
That's an acceptance.
CPW Director will be spending that money.
Okay.
All right, and the last, the last one on page two would be...
Bill from last year.
An old bill for the school.
The prior year expense.
Page three, the first one is to amend 2019 operating budget, because the school had some expenses that were over.
Special education costs have just skyrocketed, and I think that's blank right now for an amount, because I don't know that we know the exact amount yet, right?
Right, we, we have an estimate right now, but for the article, you don't have to have the number in there, and usually, just in case anything changes, right, the motion will have the number.
But that's what it's, it's for sped costs, the increased sped costs that are above and beyond what the schools can handle at this point.
Right.
Next one is Open Space Committee to borrow or transfer some of money for the construction of pavilion at Smith Academy Park, so...
And the article also authorizes the town to enter into any contracts, grant contracts, because we'll be applying for money from the, through the Parkland Acquisitions Committee...
Right, and that's the $50,000 grant.
Actually, it's $52,000, $52,744, and I noticed that second sentence has $50,000, I need to change that to $52,744 as well.
Right, but the, but the grant is for $50,000, right?
No, they've actually increased...
They've increased it?
Yes.
Oh, for the, oh, even better, okay, so, but that's a reimbursable grant, is where I was going with that, so we've got to pay the money, and then turn around and get it reimbursed, which is, we got that the first round as well. is, we got that the first round as well. So this would be, this is our second application for an additional.
Right.
Roughly $50,000.
The previous grant was for the.
The beginning of the whole.
The land improvements.
Yep, okay.
Okay, next one's three to five. We already had enough of discussion on that for tonight.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to the next one. Next one is the pilot program with Select Energy for the solar panels at Smith Academy.
Correct, we have to accept them.
So the pilot program is, and we're a tax.
Payment in lieu of taxes.
That's to authorize the Board of Selectmen or any municipal board to negotiate.
Right.
With them.
And next article was the recycling for 10 years competitive bid.
Right, the current contract expires June of 2020. And this will allow the Board of Selectmen, provided that Board of Selectmen accept the vendor that is the lowest vendor. We're not putting that out to bid, but we'll have to sign a contract at the end of the year.
And what was the reason for the next article? Is that something that?
This is, the next article's to accept the provisions of Chapter 200A, Section 9A, and it's to adopt a policy for the treasurer to manage uncashed checks. It's also known as tailings. That was recommended by the department, I mean, the Division of Local Services when our financial policies were updated. And there's a few of those in here.
Okay. Page four, the first article would be Mass General Laws, Chapter 40HA. Is there a reason, is the state requiring this?
And that, well, I, we, the town has received a letter, and I've received a phone call, and they're just, you know, a phone call from the Massachusetts Office on Disability. And they're following up with municipalities that have not adopted. And this chapter, and what establishes a municipal commission on disability. You know, if we had parking fines, this commission would oversee, have hearings in anybody who wanted to appeal a fine. But all this does is just establish a commission at the request of the state, the Office of.
Does the town establish this commission, or where does this?
The Selectmen would appoint this committee.
Okay. Yeah, the next one would be to trust fund for other post-employment benefits. What's the purpose of that article?
The OPEB, to create a trust fund. This was also recommended by the Division of Local Services and is referenced in the financial policies.
Okay.
In 2014, the town voted to accept, or to, to accept other post-employment benefits, OPEB. The town did not vote to create a trust fund pursuant to Chapter 32B, Section 20. That was not included in the article that was voted in 2014. It was Article 26.
And we move into general bylaw articles.
This is to add a revolving fund?
Then we have this set up before, a revolving fund?
Right, we, last year, we implemented the revolving fund as a town bylaw, or an ordinance, as required by the Department of Revenue. Whenever you're going to add or remove a fund, you have to amend your town bylaws. So again, it was recommended by the accountant to add a tax title revolving fund when, when the collector is, is, you know, has municipal liens on property.
Yeah.
And, or it's in tax, property's in tax title. There are expenses that are incurred by that office for legal advertising. This revolving fund would be set up, any fees the town would collect can go into that revolving fund, and she can use, he or she can use that.
So page five, that next, the first article is part of that?
Yes, it is.
Okay, with the tax title.
Yes.
And also the.
And the cap is $25,000.
And the next article's for the tax collector also?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
That was recommended by the Division of Local Services.
Can I just ask a quick question? The $25,000 cap, is that, is that standard? Is that what it has to be, or is that just what you figure that we need here?
The accountant was comfortable with 25 or 50,000.
That can change over the years or whatever.
It could.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and we're at page six, zoning bylaw articles submitted by the floodplain overlay district.
Well, there is an article at the bottom of page, on mine, page five. And that, again, is to amend Article 7 of the town bylaws. Currently, the bylaw allows the town to review, review businesses, or anybody requiring a permit, permit or license that has outstanding taxes 12 months or greater. Under the Municipal Modernization Act, towns may now review that, review licensees, or anybody applying for a permit for less than 12 months, who have outstanding taxes less than 12 months. And you may do it, other than just annually, you could do it.
We weren't allowed to do that before?
No.
Really?
So this is a bylaw.
Wow.
I inserted the bylaw, and what we're striking is for not less than a 12-month period.
All right.
And we're adding, we're inserting for less than 12 months, and to do so more often than annually.
Okay. Page six, floodplain.
I just, if you're confused, I can, I can still, I can, I feel there's a question on your face. So annually, the Board of Selectmen approves licenses. The Board of Health reviews licenses and renews them. Prior to the Board of Selectmen approving annual licenses, we notify the collector's office and ask them if any of the following licensees have outstanding taxes 12 months or greater. And she will notify you. Then we notify the applicant that their license could be held up if they don't make some kind of an arrangement with the collector's office to pay their outstanding taxes.
And we have the right to hold that license?
You do, you do, based on that bylaw.
Based on that bylaw.
What this does now, if accepted, is allows the town to do it more often, as opposed to annually, and to ask the collector if there's outstanding taxes less than 12 months. Where pre, currently, it's, the taxes are outstanding for 12 months or greater.
Okay. Page six, amend Section 24, I don't know what they're amending.
Right, waiting to receive that. The Planning Board has to have a hearing. Department of Conservation, Mass Department of Conservation and Recreation, Mass Flood Hazard Management Program Division is recommending that we update our zoning bylaws in accordance to the National Flood Insurance Program.
Community Preservation Committee, next article is for moving some money around, right?
That's a standard.
Yeah.
Budget article for the fiscal year. The next two articles are projects that the.
Well, how is that one different than the other one for Smith Academy Park?
How is specific to the pavilion?
Right, the Community Preservation article for $60,000, they're going to contribute towards the creation of a pavilion at the park.
I thought there was one that we already talked about as far as the park.
We did.
Page three.
Right. And that article on page three describes that the Community Preservation Committee would be contributing, actually, does that say 40?
Yep.
Okay, well, they have an error there, because Community Preservation submitted the article for $60,000.
Okay, so, page three is open space committee for.
Right, open space is submitting it for the $52,744. So open space and CPC have their numbers crossed.
Okay, so, should those articles be sort of one after the other, or?
I can insert that in front of the CPC article.
Well, we can. I think they usually keep all the CPC sort of together, because there's many of, traditionally, there's many of them, that's the only reason. We could always speak to it during the motion or during the conversation, but I think that, yeah, the article.
Need to clarify that.
The article on page three says $40,900 from CPA and CPC, and then the other article under CPC is saying 60. So there's, you know, there's a $19,000 difference there.
Good to point that out. So I will clarify with CPC and open space.
Okay.
It would make sense that it's actually the lesser amount, if you, you know, if you go back to page three, if the total thing is 91,000, and we're getting 52 from a grant, then there's the difference.
Well, that's right, yeah.
Okay, page seven.
But who knows?
That's CPC. Request for the main street cemetery buildings ways for pathways. Yep. $30,000, right, so. Next one is a revolving fund thing. For community gardens, DPW motor grader hazardous materials, and that's, we did that last year, too, right?
Those are all the revolving funds. So you're just voting the spending limit.
Okay.
That's all you need to do, is vote the spending limit, correct?
Thank you.
And the last article on page seven is to determine what sums the one eighth of town will raise in appropriations for cable TV enterprise fund, water and sewer enterprise fund, ambulance revenue.
That is the operating budget article.
Yeah, okay. Operating budget, that's right. And page eight would be just the reports for the welfare of the town.
Then you said there, at this point, there's two additional ones that will be.
Yes. Fiscal year 19, water and sewer operating expenses, and a prior year bill.
Okay.
Another prior year bill. And if there's any fiscal year 18 deficits that need to be, yeah.
No matter how big or small, we got to put it on there.
Now, under this capital projects, you have presented us a listing of various projects, and I think you were hoping that somehow we would make a recommendation, or we just want to review these and come back?
Well, right, not necessarily recommending it at this time, but just to, for the board to start discussions, I don't think that, you know, the board has had any, not any, I believe when you met with the Finance Committee a couple weeks ago, there was some.
Kind of a quick.
It was, right.
Quick go-through with the department heads.
But to, you know, have some dialogue about the projects for fiscal year 20, and what would you potentially be moving forward? But also, it's subject to funding.
Right.
Well, the funding, I mean, April 1st is the auditors come in, and then in a couple weeks after that, then we might have a idea of what free cash is. So at that time, once we get the free cash, then beforehand, at least we have this list we can start thinking of.
Well, the other thought is, you know, just to give me some idea as potential articles, because they'll need to go on the town meeting warrant if, if we are going to have some free cash, or have free cash available.
Right, and I don't want to speak for the Finance Committee, because they're not here. And I know we'll have these conversations to button it up, but for sure, we need to do the, at the sewer wastewater, the infiltration study. We've pushed, we've pushed that out a couple of times now.
We could be looking at fines.
We could be looking at fines, and that's the department, that's the DEP issue, so that's a $50,000. I'm just saying all this out loud for the people at home. We have a list of 15, roughly, maybe more. So I would say that that, that's at the top of the priority list. And the jaws of life have also been pushed out a few different times, and the chief was explaining how it's, the current one's in rough shape and can't buy parts, and, and I'm sure each department would also come forward and say that theirs are quite important, as they are, of course. But I think the inflow, infiltration study and the jaws of life certainly are going to be at the top of that list for, when we all get together to discuss it. And again, there's many other things, but those two things together are about $100,000.
I mean, you also have the paramedic equipment that was approved at town meeting.
Agreed.
And that's, that's a funding more issue.
Yep, so, yeah, like I said, I wasn't trying to say other things weren't important, but I know.
I did attend the Finance Committee meeting Thursday, and that was kind of about where they were. You know, like, this is important, this is important, but nobody's got exact figures yet for free cash.
Another week or two to figure out, though.
Kind of the same boat.
Do you need more than that at this point, Marlene, or?
No, I just, just wanted to see some dialogue, and I just also wanted to point out that the parking lots at the, well, actually, there were.
The school.
I think this one is just for the elementary school.
It is.
But the school has previously, previous year submitted.
They have.
A request for the high school parking lot.
Yeah, that's, that's on a future capital planning list, but that is, that is on the, you know.
And I just wanted to point out that that is something that's been on the capital plan for a while.
It has, it has. It's a bit, you know, and it, it's almost $200,000.
Yes. It's an expensive project.
It's the whole, you know, it's the whole area. It's everything that's blacktopped out there, and they would reconfigure the process. But anybody who works there, or parks there, or walks from their car to the building, whether they're staff, or concertgoers, or whatever, realizes that it's.
This is strictly the parking lot, Brian? Is it the driveway at all going into?
All the blacktop.
All the blacktop? Okay, because I mentioned to.
The front, the back, the whole.
Okay, I mentioned to.
The back in particular.
Phil today, there is a safe, safe route to schools grant, and I thought, geez, I wonder if we could take a look at that and see, you know, Phil's thought was it would just be sidewalks, and it very well may be. But I was just thinking that you have the drive into the school.
Well, we could find out. The, I guess the good news, or the bad news, depending how you look at it and what you guys remember, is the sidewalks are great now, but it took us five years of cracked sidewalks and an awful lot of extra money. And extra trap rock, and I was part of that whole thing. So the sidewalks are in good shape, but if we can get a grant for something, and maybe make improvements to them, or maybe they can do it also for the, for the blacktop surface.
That was all grant for the sidewalks.
Well, the sidewalks originally were part of the new building, but then after that, and the warranties all expired, and the sidewalks became problematic, that ended up being paid for, definitely some of school choice, I think some town money as well, and also the original, not the contractor, but the architect, maybe, you know, there was, there was an awful lot of back and forth. I mean, it took years, months, years, and it finally got straightened out. But, but we got there.
And you see, I remember it was probably a couple of years it was going on.
Yeah, oh, at least, yeah.
Could be.
It was like the day the warranty expired, it all started, but anyways. So, but yeah, I think it's pretty much anything that's blacktopped around the school is what's, what's part of this, I believe.
Okay.
But definitely, definitely that back parking lot.
Just, yeah.
All right, so that covers everything for topic seven, I think, for now. There'll be further discussion, so. Topic eight, Marlene, you have an update on page two, town hall renovations.
Yes, so you have a copy, I believe you've seen the notification to the architect to proceed with, with bidding the project, the base bid project, and, which is the elevator, the external ramp, and the fire suppression. They, the architect is preparing those bid documents and had said that he would like to have a meeting. I don't know what your availability will be. He was talking about maybe next week, but he would like to just sit down and, and go over, you know, the whole process.
Yeah.
Are there any dates as to when, you know, it's going to go out? You expect bids in, or anything like that? Is there any?
He hasn't given me any, any dates yet. He hasn't given me any dates yet for when that will be. Maybe for the meeting, he will have that, a timeline, so kind of a timeline.
I was going to follow up on Cindy's comments, so yeah, I think we had the special town meeting because the whole idea was to get approval in the winter so we could hit the ground running in the spring, so.
Right.
I'm sure they had to redo some of their things, but yeah. So maybe he can come prepared to answer some of those questions from some of us or all of us, whoever were able to make this meeting. Yeah, an absolute timeline.
Yeah, no, I made it very clear that, you know, the town is very much interested in seeing this start moving, because we're looking at a year's worth of construction.
We have roughly 18 months, right? We have till September of 2020? Or did they only give us till July, June, the end of June in 2020? We have a year, right? It was September, and then they pushed it out to a...
2020. I believe it's September 1st, 2020.
Oh, it's still September, okay. So, but, so, you know, we've got between a year and a year and a half to get this thing rolling and wrapped up and completed.
And a lot of projects are usually 18 months, so we should be...
I mean, if we get moving, we're right on... If they get moving, they're right on target.
And if we're under construction, I doubt if the Architectural Board's going to be mad at us because we'll... If we're out, I mean, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
If there's actual pipes going in and stuff being done, then...
Yeah, get to show something for it.
Okay, anything else for the good of the town I have to... So I have a motion.
Motion to adjourn?
I have a motion adjourned. I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good evening.
Thanks, John.